Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council's Plush Base Session.
Today Tuesday, April 24, 2018. And calling this meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Ms. Rowland?
Present.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Here.
Here.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Moving on to the invocation. Councilman Majors, please.
I'd like to ask everyone for a moment of silence as we recognize two individuals that we lost in our Harrisburg community in the past week. First, Bishop Benjamin J. Ravenow. He was an upstanding member of our community and a pastor in our community with the Cochrane Church, and his loss will be severely missed by our entire community. And as well as Ms. Willow Williams, she was the three-year-old that lost her life tragically in the house fire on Logan Street. I just ask that you keep both families in our thoughts and prayers, and really if there's anything you can do to contribute to the family who lost everything, that'd be really appreciative. I know that they would appreciate it a lot. So just with that, we have a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Moving on to pledge allegiance. Councilwoman Green.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Moving on to communications. Tonight, we have a presentation by Habitat for Humanity of Greater Harrisburg. Would you please come forward? And please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council, mayor, head of the administration. I am Gary Langford, the Executive Director of Tri-County Housing Development Corp. We are the city's community housing development organization, and with me is Yinka Ade Subokin, the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of the Greater Harrisburg Area.
Thank you, Mr. Majors.
We're very excited to be here.
Well, thank you for coming.
I think this is somewhat unprecedented that you have two nonprofits unrelated that are working together for a common good. Both of our missions are to certainly provide affordable housing to low-to-modern income families here in the city and throughout the region. So we're not here asking for anything, maybe a little bit, but not much.
Not tonight.
No, I don't mean that.
Couple weeks.
In fact, on the heels of this presentation tonight, you will be meeting with the mayor and some of his administration tomorrow morning to talk about those. Nonetheless, we have Tri-County Housing has six homes to build, that's with Tower Street, a project called Mount Pleasant Homes. We've built ten homes to date, and this gentleman and I got our heads together, and we're going to get three of those six homes built.
Okay.
He's done a very nice job in this presentation, and I will just take a time out and begin that presentation.
Thank you.
We will answer any questions and look forward to your comments.
Yes, so thank you, our administration, Mr. Mayor, council, thank you very much. And this is, you know, it's an exciting opportunity, and that's what, you know, Gary and I have been working towards, figuring out how we can work together and seeing this. And we were, you know, blessed to have the opportunity to host a Woodsworth mission trip from Woods Memorial Presbyterian Church in Indianapolis, Maryland. So that'll be the first slide. So they've been doing this type of work for thirty years. They travel to habitat affiliates across the country. Their mission statement is down there, obviously, and this year, it's essentially, what I've been comparing it to is competing for the Olympics, right? So one hundred and sixty volunteers come with, you know, four-to-one youth, so there's going to be about one hundred and thirty youth and thirty adults, and they come, and we, this year, the final three were between Cincinnati, Ohio, Charleston, South Carolina, and we were able to, what I call win the bid, but they hate to make it seem that way, but we were able to, you know, get the opportunity to host their services. And it's been an exciting time. And they've gone, see, actually, last year, they're in Pennsylvania as well, and in Armstrong County. So they've done this across the Northeast is essentially where they travel. So this is an exciting chance for us.
And the key to getting these folks to commit to come to Harrisburg was providing the appropriate housing.
Okay.
And we were fortunate and blessed. They need to have a high school gymnasium, where sleeping bags can roll out for one hundred and sixty, and have appropriate his-and-her showers, and also have a cafeteria, because they bring a crew along that actually does the cooking for the nine days if they're here. We were fortunate enough to get the West Shore Christian Academy to agree to support us.
Oh, wonderful.
Yes, yeah, it's essentially like an army. You know, they have this already planned out, this is their schedule. I would say there's, you know, key dates, five workdays, two days off, and we'll touch on each of those days, and then the two travel days on either end. As Gary mentioned, you know, the West Shore Christian Academy is going to host them. They're going to, you know, convoy every day between, you know, where they're staying at the West Shore Christian Academy to the job site at the fifteen-seventeen Swatara, and there's a slew, we'll go through the site plans of that, and then there's a stopover at the Habitat Restore on Paxton Family Street. And, you know, as part of what we, and the joke was, we maybe not asked for anything, but we're receiving sponsorships, and we have sponsorships for this, and luckily, Enterprise has donated, you know, a portion of the cost for fifteen, fifteen passenger vans. So, you know, that is a big incentive. So, you know, Enterprise is working with us on that, so they discounted the cost for fifteen, fifteen passenger vans for them, and that's how they'll be, you know, traversing between West Shore Christian Academy and this Allison Hill. The site, you know, these are the Mount Pleasant Homes, this is, you know, Gary's, we'll touch on that, everything that needs to go on, but, you know, these are the last six.
Yes, ten homes to date have been built, three on Sixteenth Street, and then the seven on Swatara. And you see the area highlighted in red, there's actually six building lots here down to the corner of Fifteenth. In fact, we were before council not too many years ago to get that final subdivision approved because this was a blighted neighborhood, but over many years, effort was taken from our organization and so forth from the city to acquire those properties, tear them down, and start building new. There are six to go, and we're going to try to get half of those six built.
Okay.
And once again, this is, you know, a nine-day project, and, you know, five workdays, and part of this is the joke of the request that we'll need. So we're hoping just with the, you know, imagine, they're going to be building off-site, I'll get into that, and then transporting the frames to the site, as well as parking fifteen, fifteen passenger vans somewhere within a community. So the yellow in this is what we're asking for traffic control to be able to close the street from between the hours of seven AM when they should first get there and five PM when they should be leaving, just so there's less, you know, like, these are, you know, one hundred and thirty kids, you know, around doing work, you know, running around the hands. So imagine there's a lot, and as well, you know, moving the equipment from the trucks and the trailers to the, you know, the corner lot. And it is just the corner lot, so there's no, you know, there should not be too much of the neighbors, you know, disturbed, and part of that is the neighbor concern. So, you know, we will be going weeks before, and they're aware, we're going to be working with especially the adjoining neighbor, so we'll let them know that this is coming, so it's not just we're coming out of nowhere, you know, setting up shop. We'll make sure that they know that we're coming, and, you know, hopefully, they want to be involved, and that is a big, and we'll talk about that a little later, that is a big push for this mission group to work with the community and work with the families that are getting their homes, as well as the people around, and then as well, site access, that's another big thing. So working on securing the lots that we'll be working on, because there will be a need to leave, you know, ladders and equipment and things that are easily moved over the time, over the time that they'll, and we're asking for that, between June nineteenth and July second. And then just obviously, you know, with the times, there's going to be a lot of equipment and things out there, so extra monitoring, you know, overnight when nobody is there, when there's going to be less people there. So that is part of this.
We certainly had some banalism in that community over the years, and that's something that we need to try to limit while we're doing this.
Okay. So are you funding the security and patrols to secure that, I mean, to patrol when you're not there?
Well, we're hoping to find, you know, ways to do it. And there's a list of sponsorships that we need, you know, in the sense of finding the cost, the funds to do it, but if not, you know, that is part of the cost of the home, and, you know, that is just, you know, essentially sunk in cost in the sense it's not going to the building, it's not going to, you know, the organization or the community, it's just going to...
So they'll be on-site?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And these are the homes.
Yeah, these are the homes, I think a number of you are familiar with these homes. They've been built, fifteen hundred fifty square feet, four bedrooms, two half baths and one full bath. They are Energy Star rated, the latest heat pump air condition, it's a central air, and they do have all-street parking and their fenced areas for these homes.
I have one question before you move forward, and I see that you are over in the West Shore Christian Academy. Did you ever write a letter to the Harrisburg School District to ask for their assistance?
Yes, yes, I appreciate you bringing that up, because we've met with the school district on several occasions.
And they denied you?
Yes, for what we needed, yes.
And then as well, so one picture in the center, so what's important, or another big thing is this is a youth led trip. So yes, there's advisories, and that's something I did in the organizational chart, but this is a group that came on Good Friday, I believe was the date, and they did a free trip, and they actually plan out what they're going to eat, where they're going to build, like what they're going to focus on. So it is a youth led trip, and that's important. So about fourteen of them came, you know, to us on Good Friday, and even working, and that's been the patients. Obviously, there's adults to speak to, but, you know, they like to push and steer the youth to lead this trip. So that is that picture of them at the site.
I was very impressed with them. We showed them the neighborhood, we showed them the project, what needed to be done, how important it was for their assistance, what it really was going to mean, and assisting families to get into these homes, and they were very engaged and very, very excited leadership team, so there's some good kids there that are coming to Harrisburg.
So just going through the phases of construction, so as I mentioned, you know, the first two days are going to be off-site framing, and this is where that whole army, you know, atmosphere gets into where it's really segmented, and so they build and they go to frame. So part of that, you know, script map I showed earlier, coming from the West Shore Christian Academy, they're going to stop at the Habitat Restore, because we have a wide-open, you know, parking lot, they can lay out things, they can plug into electrics, so they can cut and frame, and they'll do that, and they're numbered, and then they're shipped to the site, and, you know, we joked about it being like a barn raising. So they go, the paths will be poured, you know, by the time they get their foundations, and then this is a picture, these are actually pictures from them working over the years. So that's them lifting a wall, and that's how they can do it so efficiently and get that done. And this is the first two days, and you can see they have, you know, the first floor framed up, and they'll transport from the Habitat Restore to the build sites, which is only, well, the whole trip should take, you know, fifteen minutes on a good day, barring any, you know, traffic on the highway.
So other than the trusses for the roof, all the framing lumber will be delivered to the reuse store on Paxton Street, large facility there, and that's where they will assemble the wall frames.
I see you have a community life team. They're going to be on-site with you?
No, I'm sorry, this is just, it's a screenshot, so it was just there, and I didn't follow it to get...
In case of an accident or something?
Possibly, yeah.
Okay, because you're dealing with young kids, so there's always the...
Well, there is that possibility, and we have, you know, emergency plans, but, you know, it's also exciting, in fact, so they have a medic or, you know, like a first aid, they have a nurse, a medical person on-site.
Oh, you do have some, that's what I was asking, did you have?
Yes, yes.
Well, you have someone on-site?
Yes.
Okay.
That's part of their leadership team.
Okay.
So the next day three, this will be the Sunday, so they're coming, you notice from the first slide, Thursday to, I'm excited, so, so the third day is Sunday, and another part of their trip, you know, it's a Christian, it's a church, so they want to go out to the community once again, but they're not going to put one hundred and sixty people in one church, so they're going to spread out, and that's another part of working with the community, to multiple different churches. So two to three teams, the teams are made up of about five people, and their vans are going to go out to churches within our city. So that's another exciting part to help the community. And this is just some of their goals as part of that.
Yeah, they have had discussions with the South Allison Hill Residents Association and some staff of community action on various certification projects throughout the city, and they will be involved in that. Because not all these kids are capable of holding a hammer or assault under sixteen and they'll do those projects.
So day four, we'll talk about that in a second, too, more detail. So day four and five, the roof construction sheeting and designing, and this is on-site once again, and this is also, so it's just back to the way they work. Another part of this is, you know, as Habitat, you know, is our model, we will be, or seeking, we're actively seeking and looking for homeowners through our Habitat model, so they'll have their three hundred and fifty hours of sweat equity, and that's why we can work well together, you know, we only work with affordable housing, so individuals, families, eighty percent or below area median income, and our other requirement in Habitat is, boy, I mentioned sweat equity, but the need. So the families will be working with them, as long as we can attract them. Part of that, we're hosting a first-time homebuyers workshop that certifies, you know, a family or individual to buy or to apply for an affordable mortgage through PHFA or with their lenders, and we're doing that on Saturday, we've been working with the Tri-County Community Action Agency, but their first-time homebuyers workshops up until this date, we've been promoting it, pushing it, but it's because the group wants to or needs to work with the families that are building the house, they're not just here to be, you know, free labor, they're here to, you know, have an impact and work with and expose the children to, you know, what their mission is. So that's what's exciting about this. And the next one is exactly what Gary was just saying as well. So part of our, you know, contract or our insurance, you have to be sixteen or over to work on an actual Habitat build site, so that's why the framing is on all sites, so they can, you know, swing hammers and put in nails, but as well, those next two build days, they'll be able to do some community work, and Tri-County Community Action has their neighborhood revitalization aspects, Julie Walters heads that up, and we'll be doing some vacant lot restorations, mural paintings, a little bit of sidewalk repair in some of the homes, working hopefully with community leasing, that, you know, is a big new initiative, we enjoy that, as well as they want to work with other youth organizations in the city. So part of that, giving all sorts of neighborhood revitalization work around the city. You know, Camp Curtin's our neighborhood revitalization focus area, working in Allison Hill, this all kind of blends in well with, you know, the Hoover Square area, revitalization as well.
Are you focusing on just the Allison Hill, or are you going to look at other sites in the city of Harrisburg?
We, so Habitat for Humanity's neighborhood revitalization focus area is Camp Curtin, and we plan to work with the YMCA, that's where we're hosting this first-time homebuyers workshop on Saturday. They have a science program that they want to get, that was one of the facilities that we searched, that we looked into to see if they could host, they were a little too small, or the kitchen was anyway, they had everything else except the sizable kitchen. So part of that, working with the record down there. So yes, Camp Curtin's another area, but those are, we're open to it, but those are, I know that's my neighborhood revitalization focus area.
Maybe you misunderstood me, there's other vacant lots throughout the city of Harrisburg besides the Mount Pleasant area, Hill area. Are you focusing all of Harrisburg where there's vacant lots available to do this same thing? To build homes?
Well, we do it individually, but we got to get through this first one.
Well, I'm just, I'm questioning whether you're looking at other areas in the city of Harrisburg besides Allison Hill.
Well, I know last Saturday, we built community boxes, community gardens in near...
I'm not talking about community gardens, I'm just talking about homes.
Building homes or lots?
Yeah, like you're doing here in this one particular area.
We have homes in various places throughout the city, yes.
Well, I know you did two, three.
The Tri-Plubs, yes.
At, on Woodbine Street?
Yes, yes.
Seventh and Woodbine?
Yes.
Okay, but that's the only three I've ever heard of, done in the uptown area, or even in the other south side of Harrisburg. So I'm questioning whether you'll be looking at other areas in the city of Harrisburg that has vacant lots to do the same thing that you're doing in this particular area, in the Allison Hill area?
Yes, we serve all of the county, so that's where just opportunity may...
And that's my question?
Yes.
Okay.
Another big thing, they're recreation digs, so if you want to give the children, you know, a break, so we need to solicit, I made the first call last week to the city's Parks and Rec Department in order to preserve City Island or the fields there, because they have big, you know, one hundred and sixty youth barbecues, they want to soccer, they want to, you know, play volleyball, things like that. So that is, and that's going to be June twenty-fourth, so that is another, like, what's something we'll have to request from the city. So, but that's it. We have, once again, two sponsors, and that's how we do t-shirts and banners and, you know, a lot of everything we're doing. And to our sponsorships, these are things, you know, there's a full list, and you can provide this as an attachment, because right now, it's just a picture, looking at PowerPoint. We have a full list of materials that are going to be needed for the project, and this is just going to, once again, help offset the cost, so we can, you know, continue to do more projects and, you know, go around. But everything that you can get offset is, you know, what we don't have to, you know, provide individually. And then that's how it goes, and certain things, you know, permits are up there, fencing is down there at the bottom, some of the work or, well, none of the materials we need for revitalization are on here, but just, you know, individual award, if the award sponsor, we want to provide them as much lunches, I know area insurance, or I'm sorry, Enterprise is going to provide lunches on-site for the volunteers throughout the day, and that's an opportunity for anybody, just to, you know, bring out sandwiches, hot dogs, hamburgers, whatever it can be, you can do that on-site and work. And the next one is what you get with those sponsorships, so the ability to have logos and promotion and, and then the ability to work with the youth, and that is, you know, a big aspect of this, is working with this volunteer group, as well as completing the homes with us after they leave.
Question?
So the last time that Tri-County built these houses was back in 2011, the second time that we did, we paid the contractor about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in units to build these. With our partnership, we're looking to be able to build these houses, with this group coming in and providing all this labor free, with us having the land, using our resources to put the foundations in, and tapping in Habitat's ability for sponsorships and donations, we're hoping to build these houses in for what they're selling for, ninety-nine-nine, which is a substantial savings in utilizing the resources of what you raise.
Okay, are you done, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Green, do you have any questions?
Right now, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Matson?
Not a sign, maybe come back if you think...
Mr. Johnson?
All right, I have two questions. One question is, I'm trying to, I know you guys are meeting with the administration to kind of make some ass, I'm just trying to figure out what those ask, what are you looking for from the city? I got the closing of the street, and I got the reserved, reserving kind of City Island. Anything else, what else are you guys seeking?
Well, it'd be nice not to have to pay for building permits, that is something that, you know, nonprofits maybe receive in other areas, and this is very unique, because we're not using any city funding to do this, we're using our own abilities, so that would be something that I know is given consideration in some other municipalities.
Definitely, and then, you know, it exposes us, it's the ability to, you know, continue to do this at, you know, the minimum, you know, because it's not just, you know, a savings for us, it's more money that we can put back into. So every little thing like that counts, you know, I was just talking with one of my board members, and she's talking about getting together a team, paying some of the smaller dollar amounts individually, you know, so anything, everything really counts, and, you know, we can guarantee that that's going right back to, you know, building, you know, these homes, and that's what the nonprofit aspect of this, you know, is.
Security fencing would be another item, you know, we've had a history of some tough vandalism out there, and I'm just concerned with, even though the framing material will be down Paxton Street at the reuse store, we're still going to have a lot of materials there on that site, and that security fencing would be something also that would be helpful.
Then my second question is, with the building of these homes, I see there are different sponsorship packages, is the only way for members of the community to participate is by coming under a sponsorship, like as far as the actual building and participating in that project?
No, so our only way of doing anything is with volunteers, so activists, this is specifically for the build blitz, because we don't want to get in the way of what they have framed, so we can't throw, you know, extra volunteers at a team that, like, they've been training for the last few months to do a specific job. But after that, you know, they get the home to a point where, you know, the shell is done and everything on the outside is, you know, secured, like windows, doors, and everything, but inside, it's still going to be, you know, framing. So, you know, or they try to get as far as possible, but, you know, it's limited. So yes, there is going to be following, and I think we plan by the end of July, and that's where the extra volunteers, but it's the only thing we do.
So how many volunteers are you looking for? Like, if we, because I'm trying to, I think this is a great opportunity for a lot of city organizations, city youth programs to get involved. A lot of times, it's about really getting information out there so people have time to plan, try to kind of say, hey, you know, this is a bigger community initiative, I think you'll have more involvement from there. So I'm trying to get an idea of how many volunteers, when will this be occurring, because I myself would want to volunteer, you know, to kind of help with that initiative, I think just kind of putting that out there is probably would be very...
So volunteer at HarrisburgHabitat.org is how I can get, and we take volunteers from Wednesday through Saturday, roughly seven AM to three PM, and they work, and we do fifteen, you know, per site, just so people don't get in the way of each other, but we have three homes now, and we're pushing to get this done, it's not going to be a project that we just kind of let go. So from the day they leave on the next Wednesday after they leave, until the project is how much, you know, volunteers will be taken, so three homes, fifteen at a time, thirty, forty-five, so forty-five a day, Wednesday through Saturday, until the homes are done, is what we're doing.
So really, the build blitz is to get, like, the framing done, and then once they leave, it's not like we want to have a complete house, I think that's the biggest other change.
So there's more that goes into that, but yes, and they have a following group, they're called Driftwood, Driftwood, and they come in afterwards, I'm sorry, this is one of the people that have done it in the past, so Driftwood, and they come, and they're older, they've done it in the past, so they come and they try, so we try to get as far as possible, but, you know, we understand that they may not get as far. So it may just be that it's not painted, or it may be we're going to hang drywall, or it's going to be just finishing, that's kind of what we're at, you know, with the follow-on work. But, you know, we're still building, we have homes in Steelton we're building, we have homes where else, we have homes on, oh, I'm sorry, the Steelton ones that we're doing, and then we have homes in Madison Street that need to be done, so off of Paxton Street that we're working on, so we constantly have projects, I think we just got a home on Nineteenth Street, or I think we did just get a home on Nineteenth Street. So, yeah, we have constant projects to be done, and neighborhood revitalization, that is where we can add on people during the build blitz, because it is just more work that can be done for the neighborhood revitalization, so yes, we can add on those, but other than that, we're going to continue to build and do work throughout the city as long as possible.
But we're being told by this group that when they leave, these three homes will be fully framed, under roof, shingle doors, windows set, sided, and from the exterior look pretty much finished, and then the inside will be studded out, and then we'll have to get the mechanicals in and work with the college group coming through to finish.
Have you guys reached out to, like, CRW regarding, I know you're looking for a water sponsor, you've got a lot of water.
I know Tri-County, the Community Action Agency is working with them, because there's a lot of projects going on, as you should know, or you would know, on the, in Allison Hill and the area, and I know Capital Region Board is doing numbers, but yeah, that is one, Julie Walters brought that up last week, but this is, I think we just got this document done last, like, Thursday or so, we finalized everything.
That's all.
Okay, Ms. Green. Alex?
Any questions, it sounds like a great project.
Mr. Majors?
Yeah, no, it sounds like a great project, so what's the estimated time of completion on these? So not just, you know, you guys do the build blitz, they do the frame out, everything, so then after that, how long do we expect those building frames just to be there until they're fully out, and then potentially, you can have someone in those?
End of July, we're actually, we were just talking about, you know, our MOU, you know, it's end of July, because we want it done, as well as working with the families, that's why, you know, this is not just ability, we're working with secondary families and finding them, so having them filled, but that's just a matter of how many people can go through the application process, because it is, we're not just giving away the homes, we call it a handout, not a handout, so working through that, but end of July is when we hope to have everything complete, and, you know, families, you know, ready to go, and that's just going to take however long it takes to go through a mortgage process.
Okay. Ms. Daniels?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. I thank you and I commend you for what you did. I've had an opportunity to go through some of the houses that you did finish, and there's such a large percentage of residents who need affordable housing, so this is a wonderful project that I'd like to see get off the ground, but I want to see it in other areas in the city, just not in one particular area, like Allison Hill. Thank you so much for the information. Thank you for coming this evening.
[inaudible]
Okay, but moving on with the agenda, but before we do that, Mr. Woolery, is he here? Did he leave? He left? Mayor, we wanted an update, I asked him for an update two weeks ago. Does he have that information, do you know?
I didn't hear what you said.
I said, we asked Mr. Woolery for an update, yes, two weeks ago, and I wanted to know if you knew if he, oh, here he is, if he had that information. And while we're waiting for Mr. Woolery to come up to the front, I wanted to mention that we did have an executive session today at five o'clock to discuss legal matters with our solicitor. Good evening, Mr. Woolery, I asked for an update two weeks ago, and here we are today, so I'd just like to know if there's any new facts that you have?
Oh, I do, I, sorry, I stepped out, so I was coughing.
That's okay, that's all right. Would you like a bottle of water?
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so, so far, uh, we have continued our process, um, looking at, um, our contracting, and we are still looking through the, um, the vendor list.
Okay.
Again, it's a manual process, uh, we are, um, a bit down on, uh, people power, but we have, um, some news to, to present to council regarding, uh, some of the bidding that had gone out with the, with regard to, uh, the substation. Uh, the substation bidding, uh, is, we're at ninety percent MBE, uh, and so, that includes, uh, so... One second. The first bid, um, you know, in, in the... Are we okay with...
I'm sorry?
Discussing on bids, are you, are we okay with discussing bids?
I guess, so, just let, or we, we talked a bit earlier.
Yeah, so, we, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suffice say that, that the bids that we have right now, um...
If you don't feel comfortable getting this information, would you comfortable making sure the council gets a copy of what you have?
Sure, uh, but it, again, there are four, there are four contracts, uh, they're sizable contracts, um, uh, one in particular is almost, uh, a million dollars, and that is, uh, um, uh, the MBE is, is, and the prime is, is MBE.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, there are some, there are some other contracts, but it, it, the, the amount of money that we're, that we're spending is gonna be ninety-nine MBE, and they're, they're verified. We also have had, uh, continued efforts, uh, with Charles and Shashawn, um, and, my apologies, I have to pull up something so I can make sure I'm giving you accurate information. Well, uh, so, the, um, Shashawn, do you have, you have a...
Thank you. Perfect, thank you. Um, with regard to Third Street Projects, uh, we wanted the numbers to be broken down, uh, with regard to percentage of MBE, WBE, DBE, um, in all the categories. We have that, that, that information for you, and I could submit it to the clerk, um, so that you'll have that for your, um, records. Um, we also have sent the good faith form that, uh, Councilman Major had requested, uh, we sent that to the, the city clerk on April eleventh. We are, uh, going to, we're gonna have a larger, um, update, uh, in about two weeks, where we'll have more information with regard to, uh, some of the other things that you had re, uh, requested that we present to you. Um, and we've renamed the assessment, um, as, as you requ, as, if you wanted to have us do, uh, the City of Harrisburg Certified Minority Business Assessment, um... Uh, we're committed to working with, uh, Impact Harrisburg and, uh, their, um, their internal, external resources, uh, however, they're, they're going to, um, provide them. Uh, and we're looking, I have a call scheduled with, uh, their executive director, and I believe it's next week, uh, to go over some of the things that we're doing, uh, with regard to the Third Street Project. So, that's, that's a, a basic two-week update on what we, what we've been doing.
Okay, just need a copy of everything that you have here, and did you, were you able to attend the meeting with Harrisburg Impact, Impact Harrisburg, I'm sorry?
Uh, no, I, I was not. Uh, the, uh, my schedule didn't allow, I wanted to, uh, but we've made plans for, uh, me to attend their May meeting. Um, but from what I understand, uh, the, the feedback with regard to some of the things that we presented here, uh, made an impression, uh, but I think that we, we have some things to keep working on. But I think that, uh, we have been doing it, the administration has been doing it, as we can see from the, the bids that we've gotten in, uh, for the substation. Uh, I think that's, those are laudable, I think they're above the, uh, the goals that even council had set, uh, in their legislation. Uh, we're currently, uh, we have a meeting, uh, set with, uh, Councilman Johnson to go over, uh, the legislation, um, and seeing where we're going. I don't know exactly when that date is, I think it's the...
Whatever, Tuesday.
Yeah, uh, to go over that, the legislation, uh, and to see where we, where, where, where we want to be. Uh, again, I, I, I like to stress that I think we need to, we need time to be able to go through some of the, the, the numbers, uh, to really find out how different organizations set their, um, goals for, uh, each particular, um, contract type of work. I think there are differences depending on where you are, um, located, as to the type, uh, and quantity of, uh, vendor that you can get. Uh, so, it's, I think that'll be a good discussion to have in, in the next couple of weeks. Um, we, uh, remain committed to ensuring that, uh, this program is one that's not only about numbers, but it's also about making sure that people have the support they have, uh, they need in order to grow their businesses, if they want, how they want to grow their businesses, to be able to involve in, uh, the community, uh, and listen to them, and take that information back and, and, and develop the things that we're doing in terms of marketing. Um, and, but it's important to note that we've also gone through and, um, we just had a, uh, with our LED program, uh, the LED program director, Frenchone, uh, speaks, uh, along with Charles White and, uh, Shashawn. They held a, uh, a forum for vendors to come in and ask questions about the LED program, and how to, um, uh, get involved in that program, and what levels they can be involved in. They don't necessarily have to find off a, a large piece, they're, they're smaller pieces of that program that they can become involved as, as vendors. That, that, that program's particularly strong, it's a hundred percent MBE, has been that way for a number of, uh, years, um, I don't want to say years, but for a while, under, um, uh, the office of Jackie and her, and her, uh, her crew. Uh, so, it's a question of how we, we're gonna communicate to, uh, council and to the public of the things that we're actually doing, um, and what we can do, uh, given the, the resources that we have. Uh, but it's really getting our arms around the whole program, uh, and being able to communicate the successes and, and some of the areas where we need to improve.
Okay, and thank you, and we look forward to get that information, uh, we're not, we're looking forward to get that information, because as you sat there and tell us about this, we need to see in writing what it is that you, what the successes are, where you've been, and...
Yeah.
What growth you have accomplished in the, the last two weeks.
What I'll do is I'll have a, uh, I'll, I'll have a memo, and I'll pre, present it to council, go through the clerk, um, and have them present it to you in a format that, um, instead of notes that I've, I've written down, will be in a form.
Certainly appreciate that, so we can follow as you go, as you explain where you've been and where you're going to. Um, Mr. Johnson has a question, he would like to ask you.
Uh, I just have a request, so, I know as we are, um, beginning to kind of peel back certain things that we're, we're looking at, um, our overall spending in the city. Um, one thing I just wanted to request, I just got some clarification regards to, um, um, I guess, um, the things that we publicly bid and we award. I was wondering, that's, depending on, I know sometimes we see a depending on what's attached to that, that particular bid, some, some, some bids don't necessarily have to get that final approval from council. But I was wondering if we could see notification when a bid is awarded to a contractor, uh, any publicly, any publicly bid is awarded to a contractor. I mean, it's a public, I mean...
Sure, I mean, that's just, that's really just an administrative process.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, just an administrative process, I just, once it goes through that process, usually, yeah, some things we get to see and will kind of have that final approval, but some things we, some, some things you don't...
Yeah, just so we're clear, you actually never approve.
Okay, we never approve.
You never approve a bid, because the bid is the public process, and you can't change the number, if that makes any sense. So, council approves things that aren't bid, they approve conscious professional services and things like that, but what you get is a lot of times, is you get the proposed, um, a lot of times with grant money or other things, and you see ahead of time the grant application that's gonna fund it in the proposal, and that's the part where, you know, it comes in, the bids themselves, because it's a public process and it goes to the lowest responsible responsive bidder. You know, we basically at that point, unless we deny all bids, have to give it up. But we can get a process, and there's more than one step, there's the award of the bid, and there's the actual execution of the bid contract. So, there's two steps, and we just have to be worked through what exactly, what we're looking for, um, you know, you know, what would be the easiest to, uh, communicate, if you want everything, yeah, it could be everything.
Is that easy, like, ask for everything?
You can ask for everything, I can just tell you it's a lot, it's, you know, and so, it's not necess, we, we get, a lot of times we get dissatisfied bidder will ask for everything in a right to know. Um, so, but it's, but sometimes for some of these, it, it's a pretty big factor, and then, we get into proprietary information on some of it from their, some bidders claim that their, the way they structure money is, is, um, proprietary. We normally get a position that's not in the notice upfront, and if you submit it, it's a public document, but just, that's some of the little fights that we get into, you know, about, um, you know, the business models that, that bidders use.
Yeah, so, that's, that's something that can be kind of, um, submitted through the city clerk and kind of shared with council.
Sure, and, and I thought in the, 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 the process, I don't want to make sure that we're, we're doing that, when we have a bid that goes out, we, uh, I think we share it with council that we're initiating a bid in, in hopes that you can, you can share it, uh, with your, um, contacts throughout the city, so that we can make, make sure that we get those, those contacts as well.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, we're, I think we're more, um, aware of it, this, this is that, once the bid is awarded...
No, I just want to make sure...
Because I probably just don't have the idea of, you know, who won the bid, or who's gonna be doing the job unless it comes back around to us, we can kind of see those documents.
No, I, I think that, that, that can be done, and we'll do that. Uh, the other thing is that we, uh, there was a request, uh, and Shashawn just reminded me that of the makeup of the, the city employees, that'll be included in the report that I submit to you, it, we finalized it today. Um, I don't know if you want to go through those numbers now, but I'll put it in that report so you can have it and take a look at it.
And my, my second question to you, how, how well attended was that forum last Friday?
Uh, for the LED program, uh, not very well attended.
Nobody.
They're gonna redo, we're gonna redo it.
Yeah, we're having another one.
Okay.
And we did get some coverage from ABC twenty-seven.
Yeah, I did see, I, I did see the, um, the coverage, so I was a little concerned. Usually, I would just say this as far as my experience with Harrisburg events, even though Fridays are really hard days, I would say. I think, I think it was, I think it was a good, I think it was a good attempt as far as a logical thing, because if you figure contractors are doing work throughout the week, when is a good time for contractors to do work? Um, but maybe, I think, I think, I think it was a good attempt.
Well, that, that's, but, and we appreciate that, but it's a part of the learning process to figure out the timing, what, what, what will work. Um, and I, I, we're gonna need, uh, some, some assistance with that, because, and I think the feedback that we'll, that we can get from the public and from council will be instructive, because, um, it, it's important that we're able to, uh, have that outreach. Um, and quite frankly, that program, um, is one that, um, we're about to ramp up.
Yes, sir.
And so, we have, and you may, it may, right now, we have, uh, our goal is to clear a hundred and eighty by the end of the year, we have forty-eight in the pipeline, and, uh, we've cleared, uh, a hundred and eighteen. So, it's an important process, and, uh, it's an important goal for us, and so...
And maybe this is my last suggestion, I'm gonna stop talking. And maybe the next event, I would try to look for, um, partnerships in regards to different, uh, maybe it could be a, a joint partnership amongst the different chambers, it kind of helps with final that information, you see what I'm saying?
Okay.
Um, because a lot of times, you know, they, they have, they have events where well-attended, but a lot of times that'll help you with that sense of communication of kind of funding, and then, with our own marketing, of really trying to get a well-attended, that's just the mission, that makes sense.
I have, I have great resources at my ready. Uh, the next, uh, request for contractors is gonna be four PM Friday, May eighth, and it's gonna be at Public Works, so we're hearing that Friday again, but, um, we'll, we'll, we'll take your advice and, and go through some chambers and see if we can get the word out, make sure that, uh, people know about this, uh, program, and continue to, um, have the high participation.
Because I'm sure, this is, I'm sure a, a chamber, I'm not sure, I'm not saying which one or which one would bite, I'm sure a chamber would, would be willing to host it to their members, you see what I'm saying? Because it's an opportunity that they can present to their members as far as, you know, gear themselves up to kind of get ready for that. I think Jackie Gray there.
Yeah, I just, I just want to comment on that, I mean, we do reach out to all of our non, our...
Ms. Park, Ms. Parker, come to the mic please.
Our network, we do try, we, and Frenchone did a great job of reaching out to small contractors. The thing about, um, chambers is that you have to have, you have to pay for memberships, and that's, that's, that's part of the thing, we try to reach out to everybody, so we're reaching out to those small contractors.
I understand, but I've, I'm not a member of a chamber, but I've had the chamber events, you see what I'm saying? So, sometime they host free events for the public.
It's up to their members.
Well, I'm saying, as far as there, everyone has their own, um, network where to get information.
Correct.
Um, so, the chambers, sometime they hold, different chambers, I'm not even talking about anyone in particular, sometime they hold, um, social events, sometime they hold strictly, uh, member-only events, but a lot of chambers do host events that are free, that even for prospective members or people who just want to come for that information, depending on their funding streams and their partnerships, you see what I'm saying? So, I'm just saying, as far as partnering, I would, I would hope that we would could, could form a relationship where this could be a, a free event, that maybe could sponsored by multiple chambers, that'd be the different avenues that we're trying to, to try to reach, to kind of really get that word out, and sometimes that'll happen.
Well, we're, what we're planning is to, um, work with our, um, contracting partners, so we're, we're setting up a meeting in a, a big workshop in June with Pendot, because they, they do the certification, DGS, Turnpike has a lot of projects coming up. So, we're, we've been meeting with the state agencies that do certifications, that do the outreach to the contracts that they already have a list for, to say, here's some other work that's happening with you in the city, and trying to, you know, get them together to understand certification, understand where they might have contracting, um, opportunities, um, not just, you know, for the city, but let's say, you know, the Pendot roadwork, how do you, how do you get involved with that? So, we're setting up a big workshop, full day, uh, we will invite, you know, all of our other partners, our local partners, to do that, and tying in thus the, um, not only the vendors, but how do you, you know, the insurance people, and how do you be bonding, how do you get insurance? Um, we'll have our, our staff there to say merchant tile licenses and other things like that, and we're hoping to, to actually reach out to, um, those, um, that pool that is available for, um, for work that we know is gonna be coming. Um, so, we're hoping to, you know, to address that in June, we're working on it, now, you'll hear more about that, because we will have a lot of our partners to be a sponsor for that too.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Majors?
I have a question, just a point of clarification, you mentioned, the date you mentioned was June eighth, is it, or May eighth? May eighth is a Tuesday. You said Friday, May eighth. I just want, I just want to make sure that we have the correct date, and, yeah, no?
Monday the seventh.
Okay, so, again, can you just make that announcement again and put the correct date?
So, the next request for contractors will be four PM, Monday the seventh of May.
Location?
Public Works.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions, councilmembers? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Woolery. Thank you, Ms. Parker. Moving on to courtesy of the floor, this time, anyone who'd like to come to the mic, please do so, I'll start with my right, anyone, at this time, please come to the mic. please do so, I'll start with my right, anyone, at this time, please come to the mic.
Hey, how's everybody doing?
We're good.
My name's Neil, I just recently moved here in February, I, uh, used to live in South Philadelphia, but I gotta promote motion at my job.
Can we give you an address, please?
Uh, yeah, now I live at three oh one, uh, Chestnut Street, it's the Pennsylvania Place, uh, high-rise, yeah. Um, so I'll just, uh, get right to it. I'm here today to request that a quiet zone be implemented at the Harrisburg Transportation Center, which is located at Fort Street and Chestnut Street, Harrisburg, PA, one seven one oh one. Several freight trains pass through the transfer, Transportation Center frequently, and they come at all hours of the day and night. When the trains come through, they blow their horn in a pattern mandated by the Federal Railroad Administration. Two long horn blasts, one short, and one long horn blast. They have to blow their horns for a minimum of fifteen seconds and a maximum of twenty seconds. Some of the operators blast their horns for four or five seconds, uh, three times to satisfy the long, uh, horn blast requirement. Yet some of them feel the need to blast their horn for six to seven seconds, three times, to satisfy long horn requirement. The minimum volume level for the horn is ninety-six decibels, and the maximum volume is one hundred and ten decibels. Every train that passes by, uh, is loud, but some are so loud that it is ear-splitting. In my experience, the train operators with the one hundred and ten decibel horns are the ones who blast their horn for the longest possible time. Now, why is this a problem? Directly across from the Transportation Center is Pennsylvania Place, a high-rise apartment building located at three oh one Chestnut Street, Harrisburg, PA. Hundreds of people live in this building, on the side of the building, directly across from Transportation Center. The noise from the train is so loud and ear-shattering, it is unbearable. I've spoken to several people who live in the building, they told me that they cannot stand the noise from the train and it disrupts their sleep. I, for one, have trouble sleeping at night as well. I'm about to go to sleep and the train blows its horn, I'm no longer at peace and it takes me about fifty minutes to go to sleep. And once I'm asleep, I'm awoken by a train horn in the middle of the night. Seldom am I woken up just once. I'm usually woken up two, three, or four times, I hear the train horn in the morning too, and this is a problem on the days I do not work and want to sleep in it. And train noise is not a big deal if you live miles away from the crossing where the trains blow their horns, however, if you live close to the crossing, the train horns are definite. Again, the horns must be at least ninety-six decibels, but no longer than one hundred and ten decibels, one hundred feet in front of the locomotive. Sounds louder than eighty decimals are considered potentially hazardous, according to the American Speech Language Hearing Association. The National Institute for, of Environmental Health Science says there is sufficient scientific evidence that noise exposure can induce hearing impairment, hypertension, and icemic heart disease, annoyance, sleep disturbance, and disgrace, uh, decreased school performance. Now, I am not even asking that quiet zones be established through all of Harrisburg, that would be extremely expensive and unreasonable, uh, it would cost millions of dollars, someone in writing once suggested that, uh, and they never ended up doing that. All I'm asking is that one single solitary quiet zone be established at the crossing located at the Harrisburg Transportation Center. In fact, I don't even care if the trains blow their horns during the day, uh, but they should not blow their horns at night, uh, when normal, hard-working people are trying to sleep. Uh, the Federal Railroad Administration said that if you want to establish a quiet zone, uh, it would be, uh, they would not have blew their horns between the hours of ten P M. and seven A M. Uh, now you may think that a horn bank could pose a risk to public safety, but that cannot possibly be the case here. The railroad crossing I'm talking about is nowhere near the road. There's almost never any vehicle, uh, or foot traffic here. I do sometimes see construction workers down there during the day, uh, but if you look at the crossing, it's a gravel road that extends from the parking lot of the Triple A Alpine Tax Cap Company to, uh, the parking lot of a nondescript commercial facility. I never see any cars parked outside the building, seldomly, rarely there are, and I never see anyone walking around that area, uh, except sometimes there are DASI construction workers down there. Uh, and on top of all that, there's a crossing gate that lowers every time a train approaches. Because of the cr- crossing gate, I cannot fathom why there's a need for the horn to be blown when passing through the desolate railroad crossing, especially at night. And, uh, this crossing gate actually qualifies as supplementary safety measure according to the F R A. Uh, the F R A requires supplementary safety measures to be in place in order for quiet zone to be established. Since we already have the crossing gate, uh, we do, we do not, uh, need to spend, uh, a lot of money, if any money, to build one. Uh, all the city council would need to do is send a note of, of intent to the F R A. Um, and I've included a link in this paper, which I can give to you after the meeting, um, which has step-by-step, uh, instructions on how to, uh, contact the F R A and establish a quiet zone. So, in conclusion, the train horns are a nuisance and they are causing a lot of grief for the diverse group of residents who call Pennsylvania Place home. I'm constantly getting woken up in the middle of the night, and as a result, I'm always tired. Again, many of my fellow residents who I've spoken with are also having trouble getting an uninterrupted sleep. Quiet zones have already been established in myriad places around the country. In Pennsylvania, quiet zones have been established in York, Williamsport, and Lower Makefield. Establishing a quiet zone at the Harrisburg Transportation Center will be beneficial to everyone who lives at Pennsylvania Place and at other addresses in the area surrounding the Transportation Center. Uh, again, I have a link at the bottom of the page, uh, which, uh, would take you to a site that explains the step-by-step instructions at the F R A, how to create the quiet zone. So I would thank you all for taking the time to listen to me, and I look forward to speaking with, uh, one or more of you at another time, um, and that is all I have, so thank you.
You're welcome, sir, and if you want to wait to the end of the meeting, you'll speak with, uh, our chair, Ms. Green, who has public safety.
Okay.
Anyone else to my right? And you can use the mic here, ma'am. Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Beatrice Jackson, I live at eight eleven North Seventeenth Street, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. Um, I'm coming, I came down here today because approximately two years ago, my mother's house was one of the houses where her sewer line bursted, and she was on T V. And we had to pay fifteen thousand dollars to get that sewer line taken care of. And from what I understand, it was because the city had, was using concrete to fill some of the holes, and it was so much concrete that it burst at my mom's sewer line, so she had to get this done. And I was just wondering, from what I understand, some other people within the Harrisburg residents had the same problem, they, they were giving money back, and we were just wondering if you guys could help us, or where we direct, could you direct me to who I need to speak with? I did speak with you a couple of years ago, Wanda, and you told me to talk to you, so that's why I'm coming down here to see if any, you can help me. We went to, is it Water Works, they said no, insurance company, of course, they said no. So I was just wondering if there's anything that anyone can help us with, because this is a fifteen thousand dollar loan we had to take out.
Okay, can we meet after council?
Okay.
And Mr. Major's is Public Works, and we'll work something out with you.
Okay.
See if there's anything we can do.
Yes.
And also, we have the director here, Mr. Johnson, he may be of some assistance as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anyone else to my right? Anyone in the middle? Okay.
I'm getting.
That's right, take your time.
I've been in the hill all day long, it's.
Take your time.
Thank you, uh, Jane Bachwak, nineteen oh one Market Street. So normally, I'm here to say, nay, de, nay, de, nay, not tonight. Couple things. We'd like to thank Commissioner Carter, the city, Mayor Papenfus, and all of the Harrisburg Police Department. Um, I know several times we have asked for increased police presence, they've done it, they're there, we're seeing them, and they're doing it in a major way, within a very short timeframe, we've had, uh, three major drug busts up there. So, am I thrilled? I'm thrilled. And I don't know about you, but I think we're moving forward, the whole city. Parking at three after five, loving our glass recycling. So all of those things are positive, and we fail, we fail as a city to recognize and accentuate the positive. Not so in our neighborhood. We, of course, did the cleanup day, but we have taken two neighborhood groups and, uh, and merged them, and now we have become a Neighborhood Action Coalition. Uh, so everybody that moves in our neighborhood, and I'll leave these with the clerk, gets a handy-dandy little reminder that says, we don't tolerate criminal activity, we just want you to know. Oh, we do say welcome to the neighborhood.
Okay.
Blah, 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 blah. But we want to make sure that they understand what the acceptable level of, uh, living is, and it's, apparently, it's working. Uh, we now have placards for our members, and I'll leave those off too, that, uh, identify a house as a member of the Neighborhood Coalition. Now, there's a strategy to that, because we have a concern with children walking to and from school, and we want them to know, we're not sure how we're going to do this yet, still in the works, you know how that goes. But we want them to know this could be a safe house. If you're being bullied, if, uh, somebody pulls up, scares you, look for this yellow placard. Okay? So that's my only reason for addressing city council. Thank you, thank you, thank you, very responsive city council. Ms. Green, I will say, you ought to come out to the community, so it would serve you well, and it would serve your, honeymoon's over.
Okay.
So come on out. Uh, our new community, uh, liaison, police liaison will be at our group, uh, we'll be meeting with him, uh, May.
May seventh.
May seventh. And then he will be with our entire community group, May nineteenth, so we're thrilled. That's all I had to say, I do not have a complaint, thank you very much.
You're welcome, it's good to hear that you, you know, there's some good things that we're doing in the city, Harrisburg, we generally don't get anyone coming down here thanking us for anything positive, but thank you very much, Ms. Bachwak.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the middle, please, come to the mic?
I guess I'd better follow up behind Jane. Uh, my name is Ryan Johnson, I'm the chair of that delightful group, and I live at eighteen forty-seven Zacher Street, and I'm so grateful, and I've talked to Ms. Green several times, and I really appreciate everything. All I'm asking is that you turn up the heat just a little bit more, because after, since the weather is breaking, everybody's starting to come out now, and it's like, we're being bombarded all over again, so I guess they don't believe that, you know, the task force only strikes once in the area, but I'd like to see them strike some more, so that they can just get on out the way, because, you know, we want our children to feel safe, and we want our seniors to be able to come outside and enjoy it. Now, the cleanup, that we, we had a great time on Saturday, it was the, um, the community's sixth time with the Great Harrisburg Litter Cleanup. It's about my fifteenth time since I've been organized, you know, when the city used to run it, I used to work with the city when they had the big cleanups. So, um, but the next day, when I went to take a walk through the neighborhood, I don't know if the folks got mad at us for cleaning up, what, because we cleaned their front yards, but I guess they told the kids, you, it's all right, they cleaned up yesterday, y'all can just throw the trash back down in the middle of the street and the sidewalk. So it's like, I don't understand where this is all coming from, you know, um, we need to do better, so I'm gonna plan another cleanup, and I'm gonna keep it going, because they got to go, because if they're not gonna conform to the way that we're used to living, then we're not gonna conform to their way, and we're not gonna be held hostage, thank you.
You're quite welcome, sir. Anyone else in the middle, please?
Good evening, Sheila Delphord, twenty thirty-three Bellevue Road, Harrisburg. I'm also the executive director, as you know, of Impact Harrisburg, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments this evening. First, I wanted to thank Mr. Woolley for really, um, his stick-to-it-ness around this whole, um, approach to really, um, creating some reform, um, when it comes to M B E, I'm going to call it that generically, participation levels, uh, with respect to city contracts, I think, and contracting in general, I think this is very important, I say that as a resident, but also as the, um, E D. of Impact Harrisburg. And I'd like to also commend city council for your real stick-to-it-ness when it comes to this, it's very important. I just have a few tweaks that I'd like to add, um, I would ask that the information regarding the breakdown in terms of participation levels, that, that be provided to the public, I think the public, that the idea of creating, um, some publicity and openness around this, I think will actually go a long way, um, in terms of providing accountability to all of us, and will help us to improve as we move forward. This is about keeping this process moving forward, and so I'm very invested in that, I think I speak for my entire board when I say that we are willing and able and really hopeful about working with all of you when it comes to that. The second, um, suggestion that I have is, um, I recall that in the presentation that was provided two weeks ago, there was some question about, um, individuals or companies that access the website, going to a site where it just sort of stopped when it ca- came to the, um, to the process of registering, and perhaps that was talked about a little bit, but I think that it's important that we ma- maintain sight of, a clear line of visibility and responsibility around ensuring that when people go out to the city website, that they understand what it is that we're doing. I know that will be coming in, you know, in following, in coming weeks, but I think it's important, I don't want us to lose momentum around that, I'm looking at Ms. Dial, because I know, and, and Mark Woolley, because I know you all are keeping records around this, and of course, we'll talk about this as we move through our, our business, uh, meetings, but I wanted to bring that to your attention, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the middle? Anyone to my left?
So that would be, if, like, website has been updated, then you can go and, and see that we modeled after some of our sister organizations.
Mr. Mr. Woolley, um, you're on the left side of me, and I want to make sure that the public hears you, could you please come and say that to Mike?
My apologies, uh, I did not mention that.
That's okay.
Uh, the website, it has been updated, uh, uh, modeled after, um, some of the, the sister organizations, uh, in terms, so when you go there, it's, it'll, it'll, it, it has changed, uh, it's more robust, uh, but as always, uh, we're looking forward to comments to see if there are ways we can improve it, but, uh, as a first stroke, I think it's a good, uh, it's in good form. Charles?
Yeah, I just want to, if I can, um, there are just a couple more tweaks that we have to do, but there were some updates that were made to, to the website, I just want to add some additional information, some clarity, um, that's on there, but, uh, definitely working on that part of it.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you had some more to say, you said, oh. I was waiting here what the tweaks were. I thought you were gonna tell me what the tweaks were, okay, wow, okay, okay. So when you come back in two weeks, you'll be able to tell me what the tweaks were that you made on the website?
Well, I mean, going into the explanation now, we put, uh, it's, we removed the certification pieces, is what, uh, we talked about the last time.
Right.
Uh, we put some information out there as far as where you can get certified, so we did, uh, at least list all the different entities out there that.
Okay.
Do certification. Uh, I, I do have to add some more, uh, information as far as definitions, as far as for each group.
Okay.
And then there's some other, uh, stuff that I want to clear up on there as well, but, uh, I've been working with Ryan, uh, Said, and George through that process, so they've been great, at least with the system, you can help me.
Okay.
So, and two, we should have, uh, at least by updating the website, that allows us to update the brochure, because there was some information, uh, as far as doing business that was incorrect in there.
Right.
So we're in the process of doing that, and we'll do it.
Well, thank you, sir. Any questions, councilmembers? Okay, thank you, sir. And I asked again, no one else, uh, courtesy of the floor to the left? Okay, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Councilmembers approve the legislative session minutes of April tenth, two thousand and eighteen, there's any corrections, deletions, or omissions? Hearing none, the standard is such, approved. Moving on to reports to committee, reporter from Chair Daniels on the work session of April seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. Ms. Daniels, are you ready with your report?
Yes, on April seventeen, uh, we heard, uh, we did a motion, resolution twenty-one, uh, which allows us to, um, receive the one point five million dollars from cap funding for improvement to the River Park walk. So, um, that is in excess of what we had anticipated, and, um, I would recommend that a vote to support that bill. The second resolution, sorry, that resolution. The second resolution that we heard is Resolution Number 42, which is basically a second portion to enable the city to receive this, the second half of the $1,000 grant that allows us to do the reservoir park master plan. The only issue with that resolution was that it wasn't specific yet. But since then, it has been amended to include the specific project to which the funds will go to. And because of that, I would like to ask my colleagues to support, to approve that resolution. And in addition to what has happened in the committee meeting, I did want to remind folks that this Friday is the deadline to apply for summer jobs with the Parks and Rec Department. Thanks to all of the volunteers who came up this past weekend to volunteer for the citywide cleanups. But Capitol Regional Order also has one coming up to make sure that our waterways are clean. So folks would like to sign up for the hard day, go online, sign up for that as well. And that's it for my report.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Moving on to Chair Mattson.
Yes.
From the work session of April 17th, 2018. Mr. Mattson, are you ready to...
Yes, I am. On April 17th, we discussed Resolution 46, Resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Scott Dermody on behalf of Bethesda Mission to construct the new larger women's shelter located at 818 North 20th Street. And, yeah, the project was in compliance, and I think is a fine addition, or will be a fine addition to the city. So I recommend that my council members or my colleagues vote to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. And next, we have a report from Ben Allen. And he will be reporting out for Mr. Majors and myself on the work session of April 17th, 2018. Mr. Allen?
Yes. So first, covering Administration Committee, Resolution 30 of 2018 was a resolution amending the rules of council for the City of Harrisburg. There are not too many huge changes to this resolution. There were some things added to committee assignments that enhance the committee responsibilities. We had begun that discussion back in January when we adopted the new council. So do urge my colleagues to vote for that. Also covering for Public Works Chair Majors, we had Resolution 43 up for discussion. This is a resolution coming out of the Bureau of Vehicle Management, and it is to sell some surplus vehicles to maximize the storage space and bring some additional revenue to the city. The vehicles that are on this list are those that are largely damaged beyond repair. So they'd like to move to kind of sell and dispose of these vehicles. So this resolution would enable that action to take place. Certainly recommend my colleagues to vote for that as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, and thank you for doing that for myself and Mr. Majors. Ordinance for first reading, Bill Number 4, 2018. Mr. Petrowski, read that into record for me, please.
Yeah, Bill 4 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, second by Mr. Mattson. It's an ordinance amending Part 5 of Title 2 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg entitled Environmental Advisory Council to establish the term services and the process for appointing the initial and succeeding members of the reorganized Environmental Advisory Council, or EAC, to increase the number of members of the EAC and to permit the participation of non-voting city personnel and officials in EAC board matters.
That will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, we have none this evening. And moving on to ordinance for final passage, none. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution 30, 2018.
Resolution 30 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution amending the rules of council for the City of Harrisburg.
Is any questions or comments, councilmembers? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 30 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 41.
Resolution 41 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, second by Ms. Green. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a federal aid reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for acceptance of transportation alternatives program funding for the Riverwalk project.
Is any questions or comments, councilmembers? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 41 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 42.
Resolution 41 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution certifying that certain grant requirements and objectives of a community conservation partnership grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources have been completed.
Is any questions or comments, councilmembers? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 42 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 43.
Resolution 43 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the disposition of surplus vehicles by the Bureau of Vehicle Management.
So any questions or comments? I just wanted to alert, or not alert, but make the public aware that there are 35 vehicles. Is that right, that we're gonna be disposing of? Okay, 35 vehicles. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 43 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 46.
Resolution 46 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Scott Dunwoodie on behalf of Bethesda Mission to construct the new larger women's shelter for the Bethesda Mission located at 818 North 20th Street.
Is any question or comments, councilmembers? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 46 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 47.
Resolution 47 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a payment processing service agreement with Value Payment Systems LLC for electronic payment processing services for the City of Harrisburg.
That would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution 48.
Resolution 48 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution appointing Ms. Christine M. Proctor to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
That would be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 49.
Resolution 49, 2018, was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution appointing Ms. Tanya A. Yeroff to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
And also will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 50.
Resolution 50 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution reappointing Ms. Rafika Mohammed to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
And then also will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 51.
Resolution 51, 2018, was moved by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution approving the third proposed 2018 budget allocation.
That would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution 52.
Resolution 52 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, second by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a 902 recycling grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the purpose of funding equipment to support the City of Harrisburg expanding recycling programs.
That would be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 53.
Resolution 53 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, second by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Community First National Bank of Manhattan, Kansas, for the purpose of financing a lease purchase of two new Mack front-end loaders.
That also will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to old business, councilmembers, any old business this evening? Mr. Johnson?
This came to me. So I guess now it's time for like summertime, and we're having a lot of like block parties and street closures. One of the things that popped up was, I guess, like the fees associated. I know Aaron's here, I don't know if he can speak to it. But I know there was a conversation in regards to setting other fees, and how did that happen? I know there was some, I think, I believe there's some changes of fees. So I'm just trying to get process of how that happens, and what does that look like?
Fees can only change with the approval of council.
So fees have to change?
No, they haven't changed those.
We need to fix that.
No, fees can only change with the approval of council, with public advertising involved.
Okay.
So that is, in fact, that's a black and white requirement. And this was something where there was a complex proposal last year that apparently just didn't write it down in terms of the ordinance. If you ever look at the actual two-volume city code, the very last thing is what is an appendix of the fees associated with each chapter of the city, which council has approved those fees. So there would have to be an ordinance that comes down.
I believe there's an application out that has new fees on there.
Mr. Johnson, are you aware of that? And street closure and block parties? Is there additional fees?
Okay, two different things, so fees as far as the block party, things in this sort of...
And street closures. Could you come to the mic, please? Thank you, sir.
Sorry, I just thought of it, because it's like, it came up today.
Well, Mr. Allen had a question regarding that as well.
So it's good.
Yes, we spoke about this in the last year, about increasing fees. But far as my knowledge, we didn't increase anything, because it's like what Neil just said. That's up to y'all. Y'all, the only one can increase fees, so we haven't done that.
So there's, so I believe there's an application on there right now. If you go to the website, it's like a block party or, I'm gonna pull it up while Ben asks this question. But there's, there's a new document which has like John's signature on it. It kind of lists, hey, these are, this is, you know, this is what you need to fill out. And then it lists the fees. And I believe the fees are higher than they were before. So that, that's the document that's actually on the website, that people would assume that the fees have, have risen and would assume that's the payments that are, the city is asking for.
Okay, well, I can, I'll look into that first thing tomorrow morning. But we didn't, because we don't have the authorization to increase the fee. So we had that, you know, me and, you know, Wes, and we all spoke about that. So we haven't done anything.
That is under, so if you go to the parade permit, that's the actual document that's up there. So under the parade permit, I'm not gonna just pull it over there. So it was as of June, it was like a letter as of June. Because I remember we saw it before, we talked about it, and it got pulled down, but it's up again. So like, it kind of has like, whatever those possible new fees that we were talking about before. But that application is actually live and active right now, and I think that's the cause of that we were starting to...
Right, well, like I said, I would look into that first thing tomorrow morning. But we talked about it. Like, you know, we did do new worksheet, but it was gonna have to be with y'all approval. We haven't discussed that. That's, that's something that we're supposed to be, you know, talking about before we start getting into the block party. So, but we haven't done that, so it should be the current fees, because y'all have to approve that. You know, we know we're not authorized to do that.
We didn't do that.
So, so basically just changing the application back to the old application, that's what it's called?
Right, and like I said, I'll give you a call tomorrow, but I'll, you know, I'll be speaking to, I need to speak to, and get that off of it. But again, we were supposed to discuss this, because we did talk about it last year. And basically, what we was trying to do was recoup. I mean, we lose our barricades. I mean, we purchased a lot of brand-new barricades, and it costs. So when we don't get them back, you know, the city's at, you know, oh, we losing money. So things do need to increase. But again, we was relying on y'all to actually approve it.
Well, is there pending order, is there pending legislation?
It's just been in the backlog of things. So we have to, we'll have to meet back with Aaron and his folks and come down to a final thing. But that was, that was started last year, frankly, I think, two years ago. And it just dropped off. So we can, we can meet with Aaron and Public Works about it.
Is, Mr. Johnson, is there a way that we could, how much, first of all, let me ask, how much are the barricades per...
How much are barricades?
Yeah, per horse.
We bought some new ones last year.
Yeah, we bought, we bought the new ones, you know, plastic, the wooden ones are so much harder, you know.
Right. So what's the cost of them?
The new plastic ones, I'm not even gonna try to guess it. I'm not, I'm not...
I was just thinking that when we do meet, we look at whatever, it covers the cost. The fee associated should be covering the cost of the barricade.
Right. And then like, you know, some of these walk runs, private. So we just wanna make sure that we're not losing any money. Because, you know, we, like the park fees, they went up, which they should. I mean, we the cheapest in, you know, town, and we really not, you know, recouping our money a lot of times, so...
And just, just one last, because I know like there's different events that are happening. Have we charged anyone these new, I mean, if that's the application that's up, I'm assuming people are writing...
Well, I know people probably put in some of their permits and stuff. But again, I mean, it's something we can look at. I don't think we got that much, you know, far in it. But that's, I'll give you those answers tomorrow.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, you know, that no one comes back and say, "Hey, we was charged for this at the price."
Right.
Just so for clarification, on some of the larger events, there is a provision in the one ordinance, I believe, that allows the Director of Public Works to negotiate a rational number for the overhead cost, which is a little bit, so that's, that's the authorization in the ordinance. But the regular, this is a fee for X, and this is a fee for Y, that is set by council very specifically.
And just kind of went off, it just came up. Someone shared with me that are people still able to register for block parties?
Yes.
So I guess someone called in the city, and they said that they could, and they directed them over to Park Plus, who of course said, "No, that we don't do that."
No.
So I'm just hoping that we can make sure we're communicating the right information on people calling.
No, they, they called directly down to Public Works Office, down, down to John. And, you know, you got paperwork to fill out, but they still do block parties.
Okay, and we can direct them to the website in the same way that we would...
Yeah, like I said, I, I, I'll take care of this tomorrow.
There has been a couple requests in the past to do it on state roads, which is where, that's a whole different thing.
Right, no, I mean, I understand that, I'm just...
Well, I think we used to just sign off and do it way back when.
I think the answer, someone felt like they got back, was, "We don't do that anymore." So I just wanna make sure that...
No, that's, that's, that's not, that's not true, because Wesley and AME Church just had, had something.
Well, I thought so too, that's what I thought, so, very good.
And, and just for everyone, the, the block party permit application is available on the website. And then there's a petition that's associated with it as well, so that's, that's still...
That's also there.
Yep, still there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Majors. Any other old business, councilmembers?
Yes, I forgot to mention that the Harrisburg Youth Commission met last week and elected their first badge of officers.
Oh, great.
So Mr. Conley will be president, Ms. Ariana will be vice president, and Ms. Michelle Jones will be secretary. And we'll be expecting to see more activities coming out of this council in the next few months.
Well, congratulations, thank you. Okay, any other old business councilmembers? Moving on to new business, any new business councilmembers?
I got something real quick.
Okay, Mr. Johnson.
I think, because during our last workshop session, we had some people come from the 50th and Market area, talking just about trash in general and just general cleanup. And then we referred them to, you know, our cleanup that we have, we had this past Saturday. And then we also heard some statements from some residents today, just talking about, hey, cleanup happens, and then the next day, we're back to, they, you know, residents are feeling like they're back at square one. This is gonna seem like a far-fetched idea, and I know it needs a little bit more conversation around it. But I think, just as far as, just like within like our different areas, and I don't know how we formed a different partnership, but part, part of the reason why downtown is very clean is because they have the ditch which kind of runs, and they kind of have a street team out there cleaning. I think, I think we should begin, just between council and administration, to kind of figure out, you know, whether it's just through partnerships, volunteerships, or, you know, whether through some type of, you know, stipend-type program, temporary workers, where we can kind of start to create some type of street teams for different areas of, of the city. I think constantly, like, we just see, you know, I think, I think it's always the balance between government. Like, it's just like, hey, you know, why should someone go pick up after another person? Why are people doing these things? But I think also at the same time, it's about really kind of developing some type of minimum standard. And then, you know, I feel like trash is something that, you know, once people see, they kind of keep multiplying, multiplying, multiplying. And rather than, you know, I think people are less likely to throw trash on a clean street, but once it's dirty, we have it all year long. But like I said, I'm just throwing the idea out there, because I think it's worthy of a conversation, I'm willing to agree, I'm sure, as a council member, willing to engage in conversation with the administration about different approaches that other cities have done to kind of maintain cleaning up of, you know, major corridors, partnerships with major hoods. I know, I know that Capitol Regional Order do a good job as far as their different cleanup efforts and addressing lots. But within what they're able to do is, you know, I feel like there needs to be a, a more aggressive approach of how we deal with it, deal with it throughout the city. And I think we should begin a conversation on that, to kind of not wait for these big cleanups, but have a steady flow of, of clean areas throughout our city. So that's important, I want to mention.
Okay, any other new, new business councilmembers?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Green.
I'm just wanting to announce that at next week's workshop session, we will be having a public safety discussion and update by the Harrisburg Police. Some of the topics will be speeding, an update on State Street, parking enforcement downtown, crowd control, and food, vendors serving food after hours downtown. So please spread the word. Let's get people out and have a positive discussion. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Majors?
And to piggyback off of Councilwoman Green, at our next work session, we will be requesting a brief presentation from the Public Works on the sanitation ordinance that is being proposed, Bill 3 of 2018. Um, then following that, we will announce a series of subsequent public hearings to, in the community to discuss the updates to the sanitation ordinance. I think that sort of goes hand in hand with a lot of the, um, information that we've heard recently about improving our, uh, quality of life with regards to trash in the city of Harrisburg. Um, additionally, I just wanna, uh, echo Councilwoman, uh, excuse me, Daniel's sentiments earlier about the community cleanup that occurred on the twenty-first. Uh, definitely wanna give a big shout-out to Tri-County Community Action, who always puts together, uh, a great, a lot of cleanup. Um, and then particularly, I spent some time over on, uh, Thirteenth and Walnut, and I was cleaning with, uh, my aunt, who lives right on that street, and, um, just a couple of neighborhood kids, uh, decided, you know, to take a couple of minutes from walking to the store and, and decided to help us clean up. Uh, I think one of those, it's one of those things, just like with, uh, a two-minute Tuesday, when you see people outside that, uh, are, are cleaning up, it's, it's contagious and, and folks will stop and help, so if we can continue to piggyback and look to our neighborhood associations and, and partner with the city to get those on a more frequent basis, we can really improve, uh, quality of life in the city of Harrisburg uh, with respect to our, uh, our trash.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I mean, Mr. Majors. Anyone else in the business? Okay, hearing none, may I? I'm sorry, Mayor.
If I may?
Yes.
Uh, Jackie just reminded me that, uh, I think we should probably announce that Governor Wolf, uh, designated, uh, a series of census tracts in Harrisburg as, uh, part of, uh, the new Opportunity Zone federal tax legislation, which is a very positive thing. It's not entirely clear how it's going to work moving forward, but it basically allows, um, people to invest in, uh, in these census tracts and receive a tax benefit from that investment. Um, and, uh, we had, uh, we had requested, um, we got most of what we requested from the city, including, um, large sections of Allison Hill, the South Side, and, uh, other parts of the city. So we'll see, uh, long-term how that, uh, how that affects development.
Can we get a little copy of that?
Yes, it's, uh, it's also publicly, uh, it's on our website, it's also, uh, the governor released it, but it's, uh, uh, if you look at the map of Pennsylvania, you see a very strong cluster, uh, in Harrisburg, uh, and, uh, in, in, in between basically Philadelphia and Pittsburgh. So it's a, a positive thing that will hopefully lead to more investment.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Anyone else? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
So moving?
Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.